We have the court room interested in it.
Here we go. Court will come to order. It is Monday, June the first, 2020. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kerr County Commissioners' Court is now in session. I have my telephone here. Eight three zero seven nine two six one six one for any input from the public that wants to call in. It is on. It will ring in the courtroom if you call. Other than that, I'd ask everybody else to please keep your phones on vibrate. It's okay to have them on and everything, but really we'd rather not have them go off during the court session. At this point, we have, this is our public input. Anyone who would like to address the court is free to do so. Those that want to call, call seven nine two six one six one. Do we have anyone present that has any input for the court for something that is not on the agenda? Okay, there being nothing about that, let's have Commissioners' comments. Let's start with Precinct One, Commissioner Baloo.
Nearly seven inches of rain so far since all this mess started. Few trees down and no real complaints. Everything's going good in Precinct One.
Good, good.
For the year, twenty-three inches of rain, which is really good, okay? Lot, as Commissioner Baloo said, lots of damage from hail and trees and leaves being totally stripped from, from trees. And that's all the bad news. I wanted, if I may, just comment on something that's precinct two but across the board. And that is our emergency management plan has a section in there for terrorism. So, but I've looked at it this morning. It's extremely good. So should this, anything like this occur in Kerr County, I think we've got a good plan. So important thing to have in place. That's all I have.
Good.
Plenty of rain, plenty of rain that skipped you.
That's already set now.
Got inch and three quarters last night. Plenty of wind damage out in our area. Looking good. I mean, we're set up pretty good. So, go ahead.
The eastern part of the county has not had nearly as much rain. And we also haven't had the wind damage and hail. So, okay, the good part, the rain would have been nice. In the past, I guess, two days, we've had less than a quarter inch total. Whereas, I know I was in Kerrville yesterday afternoon and they probably had three inches. It was pouring. But anyway, it'll all come around, but we've had a pretty good year so far. Hope to get a little bit more rain. As a general comment that just to be thinking about as we go into budget and things and since I'm looking over at Kelly, kind of involves her department, it is getting harder and harder for Road and Bridge to find locations to put their material. And we really need to look at the budget of either buying a lot of small one-acre tracks scattered throughout the county then to put material or buying another yard somewhere. It's becoming a real problem. And I know we just lost another one in my precinct. And it's kind of like, you know, they're unsightly, I understand. People don't want them right next to the front gate. But at the same time, it's going to start costing the county a lot of money if we have to have everything in one central location in the middle of Kerrville. So, it's something we need to think about going into budget. That's it.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything to report at the county level other than we survived last week. And I was, we're very blessed. We just lost one huge tree, but that was enough. But we didn't lose a roof. We didn't lose a house. A lot of people in Kerrville South did, I know. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and start the agenda here. Let's go to 1.1, which is Dub Thomas, our Emergency Management Coordinator. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the update, facility use, and other matters related to COVID-19.
Morning Judge, morning Commissioners. All right, this is Situation Report number thirteen, our thirteenth week, you know, working through the COVID. We're going to kind of go through the report like we usually do. I'm going to kind of leave off some of the stuff that's been talked about in the past, all of the government's executive orders and those types of things. Our emergency operations center is still active and we're still operating at an increased readiness level. NXH, health and medical is still implemented and we're still in current, in phase three of the pandemic plan. Now, the current situation, Kerr County received one positive COVID-19 result last week. That's one DSHS confirmed. You've seen probably where Peterson Regional posted that we've had basically two, number twenty and twenty-one. But I've not received confirmation from DSHS yet on that number twenty-one, but that, that one is expected. Mobile testing, testing continues by the Texas Military Forces today at the Hill Country Youth Event Center from nine AM to five PM. If y'all probably got the code red this weekend telling everybody how to register for that, there's an eight hundred number. I'm sorry, it's five one two eight eight three twenty-four hundred, or they can go to the texascovidtest.org to be screened and then we'll get an appointment to sign up for COVID testing for today. So you've still got your numbers from the nursing homes and the last three military testings that have been done. Totals today for the Kerr County testing, I did not have Peterson Regionals. Back to page three there at the bottom, we're under Kerr County testing. Peterson Regional Medical Center, as of today, has done nine hundred and ninety-nine tests. So that eight eighty is last week's number. Texas Military Forces have done two hundred and ninety-five. Nursing homes, six hundred and seventy-five were done by Kerrville Fire Department and Peterson Regional. COVID positive total was nineteen hundred and sixty-nine, I'm sorry, COVID positive was twenty. So our infection rate is less than, it's right at one percent, point zero one zero one. Other than that, based on Friday afternoon's numbers for DSHS Region Eight. In Texas, we've had sixty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-seven confirmed cases, one point eight two in the million in the, in the United States and six point one one million worldwide. Total deaths for Texas, sixteen hundred and seventy-two, a hundred and six thousand in the United States, three hundred and seventy thousand worldwide. Texas recovered is forty-two thousand. The United States, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. In the world, two point six million people have recovered from COVID-19. Testing continues in the state of Texas, a total of one million seventy-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one tests of that. And this is new, the stuff that they've been putting on their website. The viral tests, those are the ones where you get the nasal swab, which is what we're currently doing. There are nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five tests been done statewide. Antibody tests, those are serology tests to determine whether or not you have had the virus and you just didn't know it. Hundred and two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. The surrounding counties, we've had Kendall County has thirty, Medina seventy-two with two fatalities. Those numbers keep rising. The DSHS website, of course, not been updated as of over the weekend. They'll update it today about noon, but they're showing Kerr County with nineteen. We know we have twenty. Gillespie County is five, Vandera six, and Kimball County is one. I left off some of the other counties, Blanco, Lano, those counties, they're not in DSHS Region Eight. So I did not update us for those numbers. Total Texas counties, two hundred and thirty-one have had positive cases. The DSHS Region, Region Eight numbers, active cases, they've had fourteen hundred and forty, two thousand and sixty-seven people have recovered and deaths are one hundred and three. Our operational priorities are still the same. We're going to continue to work with the city of Kerrville and Peterson Regional in providing testing and for information on how to avoid being infected with COVID-19. Any questions on anything this morning?
I want to thank you for putting the percentage down.
You're welcome.
It puts a weight of respect on it.
And Dub, just to follow up on a meeting we had last week with the city and with Peterson. We are coordinating how we report these, these positive cases. Everything's going to go through the DSHS, the Department of State Health Services. Dub is our primary contact on that. The hospital and the city have their own emergency management coordinators who will go through him. And for people that want to know the actual number, the official number, it will come through Dub, comes through the county.
And we didn't have to avoid any kind of confusion. I know a couple of weeks ago when we had, I think Peterson Regional put out, they had COVID positives thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. When in reality, somebody had been tested at an off-site facility somewhere else. DSHS had already notified me of number thirteen. Peterson Regional did not know that at the time. So try and keep all the numbers consistent with what's on the DSHS website and what we, we know that we have. The state notifies the county Emergency Management Coordinator and then I will push those numbers out to the PIOs.
And so that the public understands the reason for this is because not all the testing is done here in Kerr County. If Peterson did all the testing, then they'd have the information. But we have the National Guard. We have Franklin Clinic was doing some testing. We've got testing coming out of San Antonio and other places. So we coordinated all through the state, through Region Eight. That's what we're doing. So anybody that wants to know the official count, go to the website or call Dub.
Dub, those that have been tested positive, how many have spent time in the hospital?
I would say three. I get that confirmation on that from Pam at Peterson, but I'm pretty sure three. I know two were transferred to facilities or hospitals in San Antonio and one was, was here, but then they, they released them and then that's when they found out they were positive. So I believe just three have been hospitalized.
Yeah, I know it's a small amount and I know one of them spent like twenty-four hours.
No deaths.
Right. Very good.
Yeah, we'll make the, 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 the city has been hosting a kind of a news conference weekly. Ten thirty, what, ten thirty on Thursday, but carried live and those will be discontinued and will be done as further needed.
That's the Thursday, ten thirty, public announcements that they have?
Yeah, that's canceled. It's just a weekly update. If there's a reason to re-institute it, it will be done. A lot of people participate in the county, Dub, City, Peterson. But it was felt that, I think all the stakeholders will continue to discuss at nine o'clock and then if needed, a press conference will be called.
And our steering committee, the task force that consists of myself and Jerry Hughes with the city's EM, infection control, and Peterson Regional Emergency Management Coordinator, we're going to weeks, meetings every other week instead of weekly, so.
But so the public knows the stakeholders are still meeting for their weekly briefings at nine o'clock on Thursdays. We're just not having a public announcement afterwards unless there's something news working.
We're still going to converge on, on a daily basis. It's just not that, we're just not going to be doing formal meetings.
And in fact, I was very impressed with the level of cooperation and collaboration that we had in our meeting last week to get the city and Peterson and county together. We're working seamlessly, so I think we're, we're able to serve the public.
So Dub, do you feel like we need to do these weekly? Your update?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just to keep the numbers going and if we have some kind of change, I think being here every Monday is, is still going to be beneficial.
Anything else for Dub? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate all you're doing. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another one that we do weekly these days, as long as we're still under a state of disaster. And that is 1.2, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the local state of disaster due to public health and economic emergency proclamation that was signed by me on March the twenty-fourth and extended until terminated by order of the court on March thirty. We keep this on the agenda because these orders are only good for seven days. So we renew it every week. We renewed it until terminated. And so what we do on a weekly review is to see, is it timed to terminate it? And I think in a lot of ways, we're close to being ready to terminate it. But we did get advice from our council last week that for grant purposes and disaster relief, that we're leaving it in place. I will disclose to everybody that I'm wearing a mask today at my wife's request. But this will probably be the last day I wear the mask, if everything continues to improve the way it has. But in terms of the disaster, is anybody ready to terminate the proclamation?
Well, I want to ask a question about the, the grant process. Does anybody know when and how that's going to begin?
It's begun.
It's begun.
We filed several already.
What can you tell us about?
We have one grant that's going to be due on the fifteenth of June. That's the one that y'all already approved through Commissioners' Court. It's going to be about thirty thousand dollars and that's for basically the cost of security when we were operating the Hill Country Youth Event Center testing site. And then some of the sick leave during that time for the jail. And then a lot of the PPE, the sanitizing items that they purchased at the jail. And another one was turned in last week, just our intent. This is also through the CARES Act and that's the one that the county could receive up to one point four million dollars.
Well, that's what I really wanted to ask is, do we have any idea of when this will all be completed? What all the expenses are?
Oh, that, most of the expenses are open until like mid-December, December the twentieth.
So it's going to be through the end of the year?
Yes.
And, and the expenses that we're incurring today, today is June one. And for those that forgot, this is the day we begin the in-person hearings for our criminal defendants and begin jury selection and jury trials. And so we have, we're meeting out at the Youth Event Center today. This is the first day that any of these inmates that have been in jail for the last three months are going to be taken out of their cell. So this is a big day. That's why I'm wearing the mask. When I left the house this morning, she says, one more time because you're going to have new people at the courthouse today. So that's what we're trying to do. But that's going, that's going to be a big expense.
Tanya, as I recall, there was something on the federal grants that's equivalent to fifty-five dollars per person in the county, so that's like
That's the one point four.
Two and a half million dollars.
It was one point four.
It was one point four is what is
One point four what?
Million dollars?
A million dollars.
Yeah, but what was the fifty-five dollars per person, that would be equivalent to two and a half million?
Yes, but it's split between the city of Ingram and the city of Kerrville.
Okay, so, okay, that was going to be my next question. So that two and a half million is split Ingram, city of Kerrville, and the county?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And, and a lot of these grants, they have different start dates. And the one for the sheriff started, I believe, February the first. And the one point four million, I believe the expenses go back to March first.
Okay, and that's for the county, one point four million?
Yes.
So outside of the incorporated areas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there could be more come about that we don't even know about yet.
Well, that's what exists today.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, I'm sort of like you Harley, but I don't want to cost the taxpayer any possible grants. You know, like I said last week, we're not overreaching with this.
Well, we don't, we don't want to cost the county taxpayers any of this.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It's all taxpayer money.
Exactly, so we've got to take care of Kerr, Kerr County. Well, so basically, this is on until the end of the year for any unforeseen stuff that comes between now and then. At this juncture, we have a pretty good handle on what has been turned in, what needs to be turned in.
Yes.
Okay.
The orders are often a great job, staying on top of these grants.
So that's really what I wanted to know is how long this is going to keep going? And unless there's some other surprise, we have a pretty good handle on where we're at. My other question is about this couple, two, two point five million dollars. Some of this other money that, that was available ran out, depending on who filed first again. Is that going to be the case for this?
The money, my understanding of the, the fifty-five dollar grant was that that was why they distributed it out. And I've already said, this is going to be for each county or each territory.
So it's going to be there, if it will?
It's, it's going to be there for us to draw on.
Okay, good.
How, is it, is that grant filed so that every, that every entity gets that amount of money regardless? Or do you have to apply for it? And then if you do apply for it, what are the?
And it's a matching grant too?
But, but
Not?
Not matching.
But my question is, what are the eligible expenses to draw on that?
Yes, and we're still looking into that. A lot of what we've seen for our COVID sick, our pay code that we've been using, those should be able to apply. So it's anything that, that we've done for protection, you know, of somebody getting the COVID-19. So that opens us up a little bit more for being able to apply more of our expenses that we've already had toward it. You know, the, the cost of the Plexiglas that we've all got now in our buildings, all of that. We've got IT time now that would be able to be qualified for setting up, you know, the cameras that we have now in this room. And the sheriff's cost that he's going to have for opening up the jail, the transporting, you know, the inmates, anything that's directly related to COVID-19. And those are changing daily. There's a questions that are updated almost daily on what, what, what's, what can be used for that grant and what cannot be used for that grant.
One, and you may have done this, also I see Kelly sitting right there. I know that Kelly made a lot of operational changes on transportation of our employees. I don't know how to, if we can go back and quantify that, but that's mileage, you know, easily factored. I would think would be the additional mileage that we're paying per mile vehicle, like a little sixty-five cents is IRS rate right now. Rather than keep track of this, the fuel, but it's also the wear and tear on additional vehicles. So that, that's potentially a pretty big number.
We'll get with Kelly and see if there's anything that we can go back and apply to.
But I think you're also going to have costs associated with the election.
Which, that's, yes, and that's a different grant. That have a grant is what y'all approved the resolution for last week, I believe it was. So we, we have those for the security of the election.
What about lost revenue for all the cancellations of the Hill Country Youth Event Center?
All I've seen so far for that has been a loan that's available. So as far as just for lost revenues, there's not any grant that I've seen so far to cover anything like that.
Wishful thinking. If they started reimbursing people for lost business, we could just close everything up and go home. Nobody, we won't have a nickel left in the state.
In the nation.
In the nation, right.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item 1.3 on the agenda. Information regarding the plans and status of the petition campaign for placing the November, on the November ballot, alcoholic beverage sales in Precinct Two.
If I may start, thank you Judge. Try to put things in perspective, there's three numbers to remember associated with this. Precinct Two, okay? And as the, as the item says, the alcoholic beverage sales in Precinct Two. So it's equality for Precinct Two, okay, in alcoholic beverage sales. The next thing is the number twenty twenty. That's how many signatures we need on a petition to be signed to get this on the ballot for November third. So Precinct Two, twenty twenty. The next thing is those petitions have to be signed, that number of signatures by August the first, ballpark. So with that, we hoped, there were three, three things we were trying to get it done. Petition signed electronically. Andy Murr asked the governor to consider electronic signatures from that. We haven't heard from the governor. There was a petition filed with the Judge Patello's court that was denied, okay? Based on whatever, okay? And that's okay. So now we have a campaign that's getting ready to kick off today, okay? So Claudia Richards is here to talk about the campaign and how we're going to get this two thousand and twenty signatures signed between now and August first. Okay, why don't you stand up there, Claudia?
Good morning. So as Commissioner Moser stated, we, we had planned to do this prior. We had, in November of last year is when we actually started to get this going. And we marketed for April first is when we were going to begin the petition circulation. However, the pandemic, we felt like public safety was and is still our, our highest priority. And to try and reach out to every registered voter within Precinct Two in a safe manner has been another obstacle. Now we are going to, moving forward, since we have been denied any type of relief locally thus far, we're going to have drive-through petition signings. We're going to promote BYOP, bring your own pin. We are going to do sidewalk signatures. Also, all of our affiliates will still have the petitions available there. And we are, this weekend, on Saturday, at Los Dos Amigos, we'll be holding a drive-through signing event. We'll be at the annual golf tournament and almost every chamber event that we can attend. Again, this is just to get this on the ballot. This is not, if we get the signatures needed, it is not legalizing the sale. It is giving the option to vote on legalization of the sale. Right now with COVID and the economy in the state that it is, I feel like it's even more so important to get that sales tax revenue. Upon review of the annual fiscal report that was released September thirtieth of last year, the county states that stimulation of business and commercial activity and creation and retention of job opportunities within the county is the highest priority. That is our goal, is to create job opportunities and to stimulate the economy with the sales tax revenue from the sale of alcohol beverages.
So another thing to put in perspective there, a little over nine thousand registered voters in Precinct Two. So to get two thousand plus two thousand and twenty, it's going to be a monumental task, but we will get it done.
We're not stopping yet, so. That's all I've got listening on as a question.
I don't know if the public understands exactly what we're talking about here. But Precinct Two is a dry precinct and so they can't sell alcohol, well, hard liquor, I guess it is.
Or wine.
Huh?
Or wine.
Anything over six percent?
Five percent.
Five percent.
Five percent. And so we've tried for a number of years, trying to get this on the ballot. We're going to have the signatures to get it on the ballot. Then in November, there has to be a vote to approve it. So it's a two-step process. You've got to have the petition and you've got to have the vote. The lawsuit was an effort to try to get those signatures electronically because of the COVID-19 crisis. And that was denied. So we have to do this in person. And so you're here appealing to us to get these signatures in person, given us all the different opportunities and venues that you're going to be there to secure these signatures, correct?
Yes, sir, and we will be doing so with base masks and every sanitizer necessary, so.
And one of the reasons that this is important to the county is because the Hill Country Youth Event Center is in Precinct Two. And so that limits the amount of revenues that we can generate from the Hill Country Youth Event Center. And so I just want to incentivize the citizens of Precinct Two to work with Commissioner Moser, work with Ms. Richards, to get this petition so that we can get it on the ballot, so that we can open up Precinct Two for some of these craft businesses, vineyards and wineries and stuff like that. If we don't get this thing passed, then I will be, I will personally be asking to have the Youth Event Center in Precinct Three so that we can get over this. And don't want to do that, but we got to address the problem. Dale?
Yes, here's a good, one day my flew into a seven points fire department and they either annual deal, I don't know if they're going to have it this year or not, that'd be a place to do what you say.
Thanks. But I really want to encourage the people in Precinct Two to get out and sign this petition, get this on the ballot and get it passed, or we're going to do something about it. So with that, okay, thank you, Ms. Richards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
Commissioner Moser, Judge, if Ms. Richards could let y'all know when these events are happening so that maybe Lisa can know and publicize it on social media and otherwise, that would be helpful to get people informed about where they can go and when they can do that.
There's a, we'll have a publication on all the events. It'll be organized like in River Hill, Comanche Trace, not only planned events, but other, we'll set up holding, I meant, signature stations for specific days, but yeah, that, that'll all be publicized, so thank you.
Okay, moving on, let's go to item 1.4 on the agenda. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to set a public hearing for the Kerr County Texas Economic Development Program, including guidelines and criteria for tax abatement. This is what we talked about at the last meeting. We went over that with our attorney there in the executive session. We need to schedule a public meeting for that. And how many days does it have to be?
This specific program doesn't have a particular number of days. Ones, particular agreements are entered into a twenty-day period, but this, I think we were looking toward the twenty.
The meeting on June twenty-second?
Yes, sir.
So I'd recommend that we set the public hearing on June the twenty-second, which is a regularly scheduled, Commissioners' Court.
I'll second that.
I made the motion, segmented by Commissioner Baloo, to I made the motion, segmented by Commissioner Baloo, to set the public hearing for the adoption of our Texas Economic Development Program, including guidelines and criteria for tax abatement, on June the twenty-second, twenty-twenty. Is there any further discussion?
Is that at ten AM?
Ten, ten AM.
Does it have to be published?
Ten AM. Pardon?
Does it need to be published?
Public hearing.
And I think there should be an email that you received over the weekend that I printed out on the very last page of the sample publication.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous five-zero. Next item on the agenda, one point five, consider discuss and take appropriate action to acknowledge Kerrville Little League's use of the county fields for baseball season. Mr. Letts?
Yes, I think I mentioned before that they plan to start a shortened baseball season and softball season. Practice will start today, game starting on the fifteenth, that's per the governor's guideline. They did ask that the court acknowledge the use of that facility, it is a county-owned facility, but I'll take the motion that it's acceptable for the Kerrville Baseball and Softball Association to use the county fields for a baseball season this summer, and that would include, as long as it's done within the governor's guidelines, and it does include the use of a concession stand limited.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, segmented by Commissioner Moser, to approve the use of the Little League of the county baseball fields. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous five-zero. Next item on the agenda is one point six, discussion regarding the available office space for regional public defender's office, including advantages and disadvantages of leasing versus purchasing the space. This is something I put on the agenda. Commissioner Letts and I met last week with an owner group, the building just up the street here. They've offered leases. The building, by the way, is two blocks up. It's the old Church of Christ Sunday School Building, two-story building, ten thousand square feet gross. That doesn't include the net square footage. But they've, they've, they've made us lease proposals as well as purchase proposals. So needed to bring that to the court, so you know, you're aware of at least what we're talking about. They've been very solicitous, very cooperative with us. We're looking at needing probably three thousand to maybe thirty-five hundred square feet. One floor of that building is, I think, two thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. The other places that we've talked about, there's that building, there's open office space at the Wells Fargo Building at Five Points. There's some private law office space down on Main Street, down by Notre Dame, that's available. Those are probably the only three options that we have on the table right now. But one of the things that we needed to do was to bring to you the fact that they are making proposals for us to buy the building, which are very attractive. And the proposal, they had the property listed up here for seven hundred and eighty thousand, and they offered it to us for substantially less than that.
So what, what is, what is the timing on all of this? Okay, the time, we're talking about a facility, but we're still discussing and will make a decision on whether or not to pursue this capability.
Judge, question I have just before, it's a procedural, which is a reason, I mean, interrupt you, Commissioner. I know what we said, you said so far is find an open session, but if we go much further, it seems we ought to go to executive session on this item.
Well, but, but the issue is the leasing versus purchasing. Should we even discuss with the possibility of purchasing?
Should we have an agreement with all the other counties before we?
That's my question. Where does this fall in the series?
Where we are in the process is we filed the grant application last week on behalf of all five counties. We are waiting on two additional attachments with regard to that grant application, which are agreements from two of the counties for their judges in that county to approve the use of the public defender's office. That would complete the grant process when those two attachments are done. Following that, we will have, we will, once we complete locally, internally, we will work with the other four counties to come up with some sort of agreement on how to, to do this, and we're not-
We're going to share expenses, but will that include their portion of a rental of a building that we own? That kind of stuff should be worked out.
Yes. Well, we've already discussed that. That's been discussed. It's not in-
It hasn't been agreed upon.
It has, no agreement has been signed, but in, in practice and in, in theory.
In theory.
And what we've worked on is not doing it on the basis of the population of the county, but on the caseloads from the county, to be reviewed probably every three years. So we would come up with an allocation between the five counties on the basis of the caseloads, with Kerr has the largest caseload, and Medina has the second-largest, and then Kendall, and then Gillespie and Bandera.
So let me ask a question a different way. So all of this public defender's capability is being looked at, discussed, applications have been submitted, agreements looked at between the multiple counties, and then we've got the facility that's out there. So regarding the facility, which is an agenda item, could we do something that says, will an executive session or whatever enter into, or have that discussion pending approval of the public defender's office?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that'd be the way to do it.
It'd have to be.
Rather than, yeah. So.
And we may still, I mean, once we get the result of the application, we're assuming, and I think rather so, that we're going to have a pretty good, you know, grant from the state to get this off the ground, but how long that grant goes into place, and there's some other financial matters that I think we have to know before we can do anything, definitely, but we, at the same time, we have to keep on going and down the road.
We're kind of running-
Local tracks.
Dual tracks. That's what we're doing right now, is because the, the grant, the TIDC, the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, receives the grants in June, and will probably make their determination in August. So that's what we're looking at. The, the effective date of the grant would be the fiscal year, which would be October one. There's no expectations that if we do this, that we'll have a complete office up and running by October one, targeting more for January one, to give us some time to, to put it together. What we're doing right now is, if, if we're going to do this, we don't have a place to house them. So we're looking at possible places to house the office.
You just don't want to be caught flat-putting.
That's right. And, and as, as we look at it, we initially just approached on leasing space, but with the, the economic disaster that we're going through, there are some good opportunities to possibly purchase. And so just making sure that the court's up to speed, that these are issues that are being discussed.
I'd recommend we go into executive session at the end of the meeting to go over the numbers.
Yeah.
Because I think they really, the court is, I'm concerned that part of it, and then that helps on a decision. Is it better to, to lease half a building or buy a whole building?
Can we do that today?
They can do it on a second today.
Even though we don't say what it is?
Pardon?
It would be contract negotiations.
Okay.
It would be contract negotiations, and I think that this is one where you'll have to-
Okay, good.
Get a written opinion from me and then vote from the court.
I mean, it's not a secret. The people that own the building have come to us, and we've gone to them.
I just asked a procedural question of, of the county attorney.
The discussion beyond what we've done.
And what we're trying to do is to get the court up to speed because of our Open Meetings Act restrictions, so that you know what's going on, get the public up to speed, that this is what we're looking into. And we're having to do this on a dual track, because we have a pretty short time fuse on the whole thing, so we're, we're running fast.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to item 1.7 on the agenda, which is consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the recycle program.
One thing to set the stage, for there's been a lot of discussion about whether materials are recycled. So I reached out to the, to the city of Kerrville, the city manager, and asked specifically if they could confirm that these materials are recycled. They are recycled. The only reason the materials are not recycled, that the city picks up or is taken to the, the transfer station out at the landfill, and I'm just using transfer station, is if the material is contaminated, has a lot of things in there that are not recyclable, then they, they're not able to recycle. And the other thing is, the only other reason they don't, it's not recycled, if there's some material in there that's not of value, of enough sufficient value to be recycled, for instance, maybe paper or something like that, then it may not be recycled, that particular type of thing. Otherwise, it is, make it official, it is, all that material is recycled, if it meets those conditions. So just set the stage for that. And I want to say that at the beginning, and then we can talk about trailers. And I've, I've had a lot of complaints about the trailer, about people are disappointed that the capability doesn't exist at the landfill anymore with the, being able to take recyclable materials. I've had a lot of people-
But that's not, we have nothing to say about.
That the city has made that decision, that's not us. The other thing is, that we do have something to say about, is the trailer at Hayes Street. People hate it, because it's like a mail slot that you have to put the recycling materials in. If you have a can full of a big container of plastic bottles, you can't put them through there unless you take them out almost individually and put them through the slot. So I don't know if there's anything that Shane can do about that, so that's the only things I have to say on the subject, and I think.
I have a general comment, I mean, one, and I, my constituents don't use it as much as probably the rest of the members of the court's constituents. But I know there've been a lot of complaints about the trailers not being there and things of that nature, and I know that the, and I've talked to Jody, she's getting a lot of the call. And people are, don't seem to understand that when it gets full, it has to be taken back, so it's not at any location twenty-four hours a day. It's in and out, and courtesy would be nice for the public, both to Shane's people, to our staff. And there's a lot of people that are, you know, that rub me to the point, I'm already away with the whole program. I mean, if people aren't polite and courteous, I don't have a lot of room for in this program.
First thing I did when we had it at the Turtle Creek School was went and got a sign printed up, telling the hours and the times and all that sort of stuff. So that eliminates a lot of it, just having that communication on the side. But I agree with you that people have been pretty testy about it, and it's not my job to help people get rid of the recyclables, really. That's not part of the job description for anything we do here. It's a nicety. But just like anything, you grow to expect it when it's there.
I want to go back to something Commissioner Moser said and clarify. So what they're telling you is, we might take stuff out there that's been, the people have gathered to recycle, you and I or whoever, goes out there, and if that time period, they're not taking paper, recycling paper, then we've done it for naught. Or it might be plastic or whatever. They, they don't have a market for it or something.
Well, no, no, that's not what they said. They said, if you have a combination of a lot of different materials, there may be something in there, they, they, they separate those materials at the, at the recycling facility, not here, but in San Antonio, wherever. So if paper were to not be recycled, they may take the paper out and then just trash it. Just an example I'm making. The rest of it would be recycled.
Right. But it might be one segment that we thought was going to be recycled.
Right.
Ended up not getting-
Depending on the market, correct.
Depending on the market.
I called them this morning to clarify that, and it was mostly like you're saying, contamination, which could include everything getting wet, a big bunch of sloppy paper that they, they don't want to mess with.
Sure.
But they have a specific corner where they put all the recyclables, and they take in San Antonio. I called actually to ask if they can cut people a break on all the trash and debris from, Commissioner Harris and I had talked about that, and they're working on that.
Brush, the down limbs.
All these down limbs and trees, and they may be able to, they have to ask higher ups for that kind of stuff. But again, that's not something that we're provided, or supposed to provide in the county. If it's in the road, we take care of it. If it's in your yard, it belongs to you.
But I think the point that we're all walking around politely is that this is not a necessary service at the county. This is a discretionary service that we provide. And as long as we can afford to do it, and if people aren't cooperative, county will try to continue to do this. But if, if the testiness becomes too burdensome, we won't. Just let you know. And the calls that have come into this courthouse, highly inappropriate, some of them. Highly inappropriate.
And I think Shane's got some photos of just the recent collections of the trailers, and, you know, these trailers are going to fill up, okay, and they, these guys are going to take them and dump them and bring them back to the location and what have you. So you going to hold these up to the camera where everybody can see them? That'd probably be best in front of your face.
You probably have the best camera to do that, Shane. Why don't you just hold up a couple of those photographs and let the folks see what we're looking at?
Can I see that, Ben? He holds it right there.
Not very long, but yeah. That was this morning. The other photo on, on the senior day, that was last week. Also, Memorial Day weekend, on Monday, we had come in and because of the storm, people had leaving their recycle, because it was full on that weekend. They lifted it on the top of the recycle trailer. The wind caught it, blew it all over the, the road, and the fence across, or the, across the street from Hayes Street, it caught all of it. So we, we picked up, me and my, one of my guys picked up probably four bags of, four big trash bags of what would have been recycled, but it's all wet cardboard. So that didn't end up in the recycle.
However, this does demonstrate that people use it.
They use it.
They do definitely use it.
They use it and abuse it.
I've, I've caught some flack from, you know, we're doing, in the process of moving it, because, you know, one, they want a schedule, but it's filling up daily, and one, one of my locations, there is filled, it was empty twice in one day, and people are kind of, on the testing nature, telling us we need a bigger trailer, we need a schedule, you know, how do we make a schedule when we're emptying it every day? So, and I'm not going to, I don't see the point of, if it's half full on, at a particular time or particular day, taking it in when it's half, half full. So when it gets full, we, we respond, we get it emptied, and we go from there. But I think where some of these people are getting testy is when they come over there with the recycle, and we have a sign out, it said the trailer will be back, but it's not there when they get there. So they're a little, little testy with it.
Well, I think most people that I've talked to are very cordial, but when you see stuff like that, it could be a few bad apples ruined for everybody else.
Yes, sir. And, and there's been some positive, you know, there's been some good with bad, or, you know, vice versa.
But all this is just before we ever get to the budget issues.
Sure.
So the first week with the recycle, recycle trailer on Hayes, there was, you know, wasn't a whole lot of action. I think there was still some confusion, because a lot of people didn't realize the city had done away with their recycle containers, and then, you know, they didn't know where to go. But the city kind of helped them, directed the call to our district, our court coordinator, and she received a lot of phone calls. I've been getting a lot of phone calls. So it, it has definitely picked up to the point where we're, we're having to empty it daily at that location.
It's not only discretionary service that we provide, it's getting to be a very burdensome service that we're providing.
It is a block found.
And Shane, over the, say, the past year or so, do you know of times that y'all left stuff off and maybe it ended up in the landfill, or?
We, like, everybody's, has been noted, there, there is a, a spot for, for the recycle. It's the first bay. It doesn't happen every time, but we, we have left, we have noticed that there's a trailer coming in there, and they do not have recycle, and they backed into that bay. I didn't personally see them unload on top of that, but that is a possibility of what could happen. And like, the last time I helped personally, I believe it was on the twenty-sixth or whatever, as soon as we pulled out, there was an operator got on his piece of equipment and pushed it up into the, you know, the recycle pile. So it was, I know at that point recycled, but that has not always been the case. We pull out, someone in the big trailer comes in, and they start unloading.
Like, it's into an area that's really not our problem. If you do what you're supposed to do, I'm not, that is not the jurisdiction of this court to police the republic services anybody else.
Oh, no.
We deliver it, and that's the end of it.
But I have had conversations with a lot of people who call me, that why am I doing this if there's a chance it's going in the landfill anyway? You know, why don't we jump through all these hoops? They collect it, we collect it, and then maybe it goes in landfill. So that's kind of the sole purpose.
It seems like, you know, we're somewhat committed contractually to, to this budget year. year, then we'll make a decision.
There you go. If there's any way to improve the slots in the trailer, do it.
I can see why they would be upset with it. They're spring loaded, and if they're not...
If there's any way to modify it, consider it.
You need a cutting torch, don't you? A grinder at least to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is 1.8, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding Recent Storm Damage. Commissioner Letts.
I'll put this on the agenda just because I know Road and Bridge receives some questions or comments about it, and as long as I can remember, our policy has been mostly, mostly led to brush debris that blew down throughout the county. I do not recall the county ever providing any service to pick up brush from the public. But I said we could put it on the agenda and see if there's any desire to do it. I don't have any desire to do it, but I think one time when there was a much larger, it was a flood, we did provide a place to put some of the debris, and I think it was either, I can't remember, it was either the polo field or the dog park as they're called, and it was not used very much.
That's when we used to burn it at the...
Then it caught, then it caught, caught a fire, we had a big fire at the dog park. But, anyway, so I said we put it on the agenda. I have not had any requests myself.
Well, Harley and I spoke about this Friday, and, you know, Charlie called, that's what he's referring to, a few minutes ago, you called to see if they give the county people concession on bringing brush out there or what have you, discount or a window, a week or two window that you can bring stuff in, and where they, they say, they got checked with the higher-ups, right? Because if somebody could load it up, why take it to the polo field or someplace else? Take it straight there would be ideal, so they've worked with us.
Well, if you have a big run on people bringing in huge tree stumps and stuff, that's a boon to your business if you're charging for it.
Yeah.
And so, if they want to give us a discount, that's up to them.
Sure. Well, I lost a three-foot diameter oak.
Oak.
And I'm not taking that to the dump.
I wouldn't. I don't blame you.
I'm not paying for that.
So, you bought some splitters, did you?
No, I brought my grandson and my son in, and we cut it up, and they're out there burning it this morning with the river, so just taking care of it ourselves.
Yeah.
No action?
No action.
No action.
Thank you, Mr. Letts.
That was easy.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break. Let's come back at 10 o'clock, and we'll do the approval agenda, the information agenda, and the executive session agenda.
Okay.
Let's move on with the approval agenda, 2.1, Pay the Bills. Ms. Shelton?
Good morning. This morning, the invoices for your approval for Kerr County, $392,214.98. The airport, $10,533.43. Adult probation, $934.36. And juvenile probation, $5,595.75.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Budget amendments?
There are not any.
Late bills?
There are not any.
And no auditor reports?
We have one auditor's report for y'all to receive, and it is Justice of the Peace, Precinct 4.
Right. And I remember there was a Parks and Wildlife issue on that. Other than that, it was Clean Bill of Health.
Yes.
Very good. I move for approval. Okay. I'll second that. Commissioner Harris moved to approve the audit report. I seconded it. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Any other monthly reports? Good. Then we go to court orders. Any court orders?
Yes, we have the court orders from our May 26 meeting. The court orders 38095 and 38238105. I did make a suggested change to court 38099. This is relating to the committee on the five county regional public defenders office, and I thought it was more precise to read as follows. Approving and authorizing county judge to appoint members as discussed on the committee, to the committee on the five county regional public defenders office, and suggested members include Don Lynn, Justice Devin Stephen Harpold, Don Harris, Judge Kelly, and the chairperson. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve the court orders.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the court orders as presented in court today. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous 5-0. Information agenda, status reports from department heads. Okay. 3.2, status reports from elected officials. Sharon?
Real quick, I'll give you a little update on some of what we're going through. We still are doing good in the jail, of course. We have not opened up housing more out-of-county inmates, and it's still at 18 that we have. We do have one of the other counties really wanting us to accept some right now, but I'm still not at the point of doing that just due to the low number of separation cells and the availability of being able to quarantine or quarantine groups and isolate, it's kind of too risky.
What's the count on our separation cells right now?
Sir?
What's the count on our separation cells?
Friday, I had five.
Five open?
Five open.
And so, the public, just remind the public, we've got 35 that we can use, we've got 30 occupied, so we've got five open cells to quarantine people for 14 days before they go into the general population.
That was as of Friday. I could have opened up a little bit more over the weekend. I can pull it up this morning, but I didn't look at it this morning.
If you could tell a little bit how, what's the capacity on those, you know, for each cell?
One?
One.
Oh, just one? Okay.
Those are separation cells. That's like solitary confinement. Every inmate that is, goes into our jail system is quarantined in the separation cell for 14 days before they go into the general population. We've got 35 of those, 30 are occupied, we've only got five of them.
You know, I have cell blocks, eight to 10-person blocks that are open too, but then you're trying to, and it just doesn't work, so it's an issue we're dealing with. On the other hand, the storm that we had did wreak havoc. There's a lot of people hurting right now throughout the county. Thank goodness, we only had the one injury that I know of, the man that was struck by lightning in Greenwood Forest. The other issues we had, it was mainly Kerrville South was the biggest area that we got hit county, out in the county, and I know that consisted of seven homes that received extensive damage to those. We got probably another 20 or so that lost roofs. We had, I think, over 20 telephone poles snapped off or down and power outages throughout. The Weather Service did come up, National Weather Service, they inspected most of the Kerrville South area. They met with me afterwards and said what they could tell, that, they're not saying there wasn't a tornado somewhere in the county, in EF1 or different areas, but the main area that they inspected, they were seeing microbursts and straight line winds of probably 70 to 80 mile an hour winds, okay, which were, it's going to take Kerrville South a while to recover. There's extensive amount of damage out in that area. I know just even in my area out of Bear Creek, one of the homes out there is probably a million dollar home, and it lost its roof and chimney, the whole thing just took it off. And so, you know, there's a lot of damage throughout the county that's going to take a while, and landfills and where they're going to go, the contract, there's going to be a lot of debris. You know, K-Pub did a remarkable job because they brought in, like, the companies from Zegin, Fredericksburg, Pertonallis, all other areas around. It was just a flow of trucks by our office out there with them having crews out 24 hours a day trying to get power back up for some, because as soon as they try and turn it on, you'd have something catch fire over here, or trees, or where it was tangled up in the lines. So, there was a lot more to getting it back for people to be safe, but I think they're mostly done with that right now. But other than that, the countywide, our damage, what I'm seeing so far is I don't, I haven't seen any building damage that we've had associated with the sheriff's office. I do have five vehicles that received damage. Most of it's light hail damage, but some of it's broken rearview mirror on the outside or black back turned lens where it got hit by hail or things like that, because they were out in it the whole time trying to help people. But we'll just have to see if any of it amounts to the deductible amount, and it may not because of the small amount. We just have to get them up here once we get it all figured out, because each vehicle has its own deductible, so I'm not sure that it would work that way. Although unfortunately, two of the vehicles were 2,020, wanted to just put on the road. So, we'll get through it.
It's interesting, this, from an insurance standpoint, Tac contacted us the morning after the storm and wanted to know what damage we had. I guess they're so used to us having hailstorms through here, they're like, oh, another one's coming from Kerr County, so minimal damage to the county property.
Most of our hail was smaller, but it's just going to be, with just a lot of...
Thank you. Any other reports from elected officials? Liaison commissioner reports.
One thing, Judge, on the airport, I think the county authorized, as I recall, like $600,000 for some capital improvements on the horseshoe, hangar, runway, strength integrity, and preparation for T-hangers, and I've asked the airport board, the airport manager, come back to the court. I think they're going to revise some things they want to do, and I thought if they revise what they're going to do, they need to come back and tell us what they plan to do since we approved it for specific things. So, they should be coming back in the future.
Any other reports?
Maintenance is busy.
With that, then that will conclude the public part of the meeting. We're going to adjourn into executive session. We'll take a five-minute recess, come back in executive session. It is 10:09 now. We'll start back at 10:14. We've come out of executive session. We have no action to take. We have a few cleanup items. I know one, precinct two, Commissioner Moser.
Right. Judge, I should have mentioned in sampling precinct two, there'll be a public meeting for TCEQ air quality permit on June 4th at 7:00 p.m. It'll be by webinar, and it is in regard to Martin Marietta's amendment to their air quality permit for their rock crushing, I meant for their facility on Highway 27. And to access the webinar, I will give that information to Jody, so anybody who cares to enter into that webinar, call Jody at 830-792-2211, and she'll have the webinar access information.
Go ahead.
Is this on the Kerrville facility or the Centerpoint facility?
It's on the Centerpoint facility. It's where the rock pressure is.
Okay. And Commissioner Harris?
Yes. We can talk to the other commissioners real quick. We're trying to have a workshop for the VFDs on June 17th at 10:00 a.m. Does that work?
Yep.
You got it?
Okay. So, we're going to set a workshop for the, to work with the volunteer fire departments on June the 17th, 10:00 a.m.
That's right.
And we've got a air quality, a TCEQ air quality permit meeting webinar on June the 4th at 7:00 p.m. Is there any other business for the court today?
What are we meeting here for the VFDs?
10:00 a.m.
We were going to try to have it at the AgBarn, I believe, is that what you discussed?
We can do the AgBarn.
We were wanting that, you know, chiefs are at least one representative for each department, you know.
Well, I've already asked somebody from one of the ESDs to come and explain how that works, so is that good?
That'd be a good time.
What's the purpose of the workshop? Talk about ESDs?
ESD.
And budget. I don't want to talk about the budget.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All changes controversial, you know.
Right.
Sure.
Anything else before the court today? Okay? Then we will be adjourned.